This is the Commissioner meeting of October 27th, 2021. It is now 6:05 PM at Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center, Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Director Fantasia.
Here.
Commissioner Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo was absent this evening. Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
Now, if you'd join me in a moment of silence and a salute to the flag this evening, let's just take a moment in our moment of silence to just decompress, reflect on the day before we hop into our county business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notices defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on September 15th, 2021, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, The Star-Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, I ask that you please mute all of your electronic devices. Number five is the approval of our agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. And I'd like to note at this time, the addition of Lake Grinnell Dam as a topic for executive session to be listed under contract negotiations. So I would require a motion to approve the agenda as amended, including that item.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass. Number six, proclamations, certificates, and presentations. I have a motion to adopt the proclamations and certificates.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass. Now, our proclamation this evening is recognizing salute to military veterans, and it will be accepted by Dawn DeVore, a member of the County Veterans Committee and the Augdensberg VFW. And on behalf of the Commissioner Board, I'm going to ask Deputy Director Fasano to please make the presentation.
Watch your step. I'll watch. I will.
Thank you for being here. All right, so I'm going to read the proclamation, then I'm going to give you the mic, okay?
Okay.
Well, thank you so much, and this is a really important proclamation here for us at the Commissioner level, and I think it speaks for itself. So I'll start, and it reads, "Whereas Sussex County is home to thousands of veterans who have stepped forward to defend our country and preserve our way of life, and whereas we salute the soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, and coast guardsmen who have rendered the highest service any American can offer, and we rededicate ourselves to fulfilling our commitment to all who served. And whereas Americans veterans are now leaders of our communities whose character reflects our enduring American spirit, setting examples of inspiration and strength. And whereas the people of Sussex County greatly appreciate the selfless and personal sacrifices of our past veterans and those currently serving our country both on home and foreign soils. And whereas honoring our veterans encourages all of us to be more appreciative of the many freedoms we possess as Americans and the price that is being paid each day to allow us to enjoy those freedoms now and for generations to come." Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim Sunday, November 7th, 2021, as the 20th Annual Salute to Military Veterans, and a day to salute every veteran of this county, paying special tribute to their veterans, to our veterans, their families, and neighbors and friends celebrating together today, enjoying the glorious freedom of the United States of America, and remembering in a special way those who are risking their lives abroad to make a better America for all. By the Board of County Commissioners, Dawn Fantasia, Commissioner Director, myself as Deputy Commissioner, Sylvia Patillo, Herb Yardley, and Chris Carney as Commissioners. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a word of thanks to our Veterans Committee, and of course, to all the veterans in the county. I was a county employee 20 years ago when we had our first salute to military veterans. Fortunate enough to be a part of that. And again, to the Commissioners, thank you. I don't know that there are any other counties in New Jersey that pay quite as grand a deserving tribute as you do, and we thank you for that. All I can say is, please do remember those people still in uniform, and they're all over the world. They're not all home, believe me. They need our prayers, they need our thoughts, and they need our concern. And God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVore, for that, and thank you for your service and for your volunteerism to the county. Would any Commissioner care to add any comments for Mr. DeVore?
Well, I would. So a lot of veterans I know, and my son having, haven't served in Korea and Afghanistan, and I've talked about, a little bit about this, the younger kids that came back. I'm from the generation of watching my friends go off of Vietnam, and they come back significantly changed. And we are very fortunate that we have those young men and women that volunteer for the service, and those that were drafted and deserve admirably and to protect this country. We all want you to know, we all appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Lorraine, also for all the work that you do, and thank you also for keeping us all up to date online on the county website so we can follow the different activities that you're doing within your department. We appreciate your hard work because it's not just a job, your heart's in it, and we see it every day, so thank you. Okay, so moving on to number seven, that is our public hearings, we have none. Number eight is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. Please state your name, your municipality, and the agenda topic for the record. So please keep in mind, this public session is for agenda items only. Our second open public session is for any item that you believe is of importance to the county. So I need a motion to open the floor for public comment.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass. The floor is now open for public comment on agenda items. Seeing no one coming forward, I need a motion to close the floor for public comment on agenda items.
Make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass. The floor is now closed to public comment on agenda items. Number nine is Commissioner comments, and we will begin tonight with Commissioner Carney.
Thank you, Director. I will be brief, not, not much is going on. I'll start with the Delaware Water Gap, NRA News. This is nice to hear, the reopening of Buttermilk Falls Trail and Mountain Road. The Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area announced today that Mountain Road and Buttermilk Falls Trail and Walpack Township will reopen, will access by vehicle on Friday, this past Friday, October 22nd. This has been used a lot over the years, and it's nice that it's open again. Mountain Road has been closed, vehicles since 2019 for their annual winter closures and for greater social distance opportunities during a period of record visitation in 2020. Most recently, the gravel road was closed to vehicles. Why, a team of historic preservation specialists and masons repaired and restored a historic stone culvert through which Buttermilk Falls passes after tumbling over the 75-foot falls. So I've been there many times, I'm happy to hear that it's back open. You should all go and visit that when you get a chance. Engineering, the department has identified an emergent issue related to stormwater collection system. It's an inlet located along County Route 616, also known as Sparta Ave in Newton. The repairs will require a full closure of County Route 16, westbound lane of travel. The department has tentatively, tentatively scheduled the repair work for the week of November 1st, prior to the winter season. The repair work will be completed by the Sussex County DPW. Full closure and detour will be required for the duration of the repair. It should be done in five days of work. We have a replacement of a signal, a signal, which is SC 36, and that is the intersection of County Route 607, Crescent Road, and Lakeside Boulevard in Hopcon. That will affect you, Anthony. It was awarded to Faygon Electric for the amount of $449,042.30, and that was at our August 11th Board of County Commissioners meeting. Construction is expected to commence spring of 2022, and updated notices will be distributed once the construction start date is finalized. We did get a grant for $250,000 of that, so we're coming up with $199,042.30. On a personal note, I was able two weeks ago to help out, it was a sponsored event by No Rest Gap, and Andrews, and Alexandra's Playground over in the borough of Sussex, they put together a nice playground. I spent about three hours over there humping mulch, they had about 150 yards, I think we moved about 100 yards of that, but it was, it was, it was, it was a nice event because growing up in Wantage, we didn't have anything like that. So we had some basketball courts that didn't have any nets on them, that's all we really had, and a couple skateboards. So it was, it was a nice event. Ed Meyer, the mayor of Sussex, invited many of us, so sore a couple days after, but it was, it was well worth it. For SCUMA, over at the dump, there's Household Hazardous Waste Disposal Day, that's going to be Saturday, November 6th, from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It's free of charge to Sussex residents, but they, you max out at 100, 100 pounds of dry waste and/or 10 gallons of liquid waste, and they're only going to take containers that are, have original labels on there. That way they know what's inside. You could find more about that on the website. Just for your knowledge, Monique and Sparta passed their voter integrity resolution, and Wantage has that on their agenda for Thursday. So people are kind of getting involved a little bit. Again, like I always ask, can you reach out to your municipalities and see where they're at? At least, at least entertain the idea, it's very important. Again, I think it's a bipartisan resolution. And then Sussex Day. I attended Sussex Day with Director Fantasia, with my son, one of Dawn's friends. It was a nice, nice event, small event. We were able to meet a man named Marcus, I couldn't remember his last name, but he has a farm on Lower Unionville Road, and he is manufacturing hemp over there, and he's actually interested in the ag board. So Dawn and I are going to have a meeting with him. Nice young guy, was raised here, then he moved away, I believe, and then he's back here now. So very interesting. That's all I have for my report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we will go to Commissioner Yardley.
Thank you, Dawn. I'm not sure if I mentioned it, but I did attend the 100th anniversary Fireman's Parade. And if I did not mention that before, I do apologize to the firemen, but that event, I wanted to say, was a great event to see all the fire departments that we had, and the attendance and the people lining the roads, and to be part of that was a great event, and I got to ride behind Dawn and Anthony and got the back of their heads while we waved, but it was a great event, and it was really just a great thing to be outside, have great weather, and see a lot of people around. So I don't know whether I mentioned that, but I'm sitting here saying, I'm not sure, but it was a great event, I look forward to it next year. So, just a couple health things. The Department of Health and Human Services renewed the Public Health Emergency Declaration through January 2022. The most recent renewal is consistent with the Administration's announcement that public health emergency will continue till the end of 2021. It marks the 17th time that the initial declaration was made in March of 2020, and it lasts for 90 days through January 16th. I thought that would be interesting to everyone. I would like to thank the library. The library has a program in which they go out to different communities, and I happened to go to the Stillwater Historic Society event where our mayor received a recognition. And anyway, they have a Ancestry Library edition that if you wanted to look up your genealogy, they have a librarian at the main library and who can work with you, and you can also get that service online, and it's available, I believe, till the end of the year. It's a database remotely to patrons since the beginning of pandemic, and it's extended to the end of the year. It's the Ancestry Library Edition, includes access to records from census, vital records, military documents, immigration, travel, public member, family trees, yearbooks, church records, tax, criminal, land, and wills. So they responded to about 1,100 requests through the, from the beginning of the pandemic, and they've since been, had 38,692 unique searches through September. There was a meeting of the Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Partnership, Data and Research Committee, and they're, they have a goal, their goal is regarding a survey of the business needs, including employment challenges, business expansion, retention challenges, labor, education. They're, they are hopeful, hopefully that we will give them some of the data we receive because they'd like to also use that as part of the program. There's a draft business-friendly certificate for towns and counties, these are the things that they're working on and looking to do, but a draft, a draft friendly certificate for towns and county departments for the Business Friendly Climate Committee to review. The goal of the certification is to encourage economic development in a proactive and positive way. The long-term idea is to have a business-friendly certification and also encourage local economic development zones for those towns that say, hey, we would like to have businesses come to our communities and set up meetings and arrange things so that if a business decides to come in, they would know what the process is and hopefully shorten that up. Veterans Catholic Charities will be opening, they'll have a ribbon cutting for a new Department of Military and Veterans Affairs Office, and that will be in Franklin, and that will be on November 19th, and it will start in the morning around 11 o'clock for, and you can stop by, review things, meet people, see what the services are, and learn about their partnership with the County of Sussex Social Services, the Food Pantry, Thrift Shop, and Meals on Wheels, and Department of Persons with Disabilities. And lastly, I was reading Newsweek, so Anthony Fauci, did I say Fauci right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Fauci facing quiz over NIH, National Institute of Health, funding for debarking beagle puppies. I'm not going to go into all of it, but those, I'm just going to read what was written. These experiments reportedly involved testing drugs on animals, and in some cases, cases, they were debarked through a procedure called cordy, cordytoomy? Cordy, cordydemat? They cut their vocal cords. The dogs are all between six and eight months old. The commission tests, the commission tests involved injecting force feeding, the puppies with experimental drug for several weeks before killing and dissecting them. Of particular concern is the fact that the invoice to the National Institute of Allergies and Diseases included a term called cordy, cordytoomy? Cordydoctomy? Cordydectomy? It's called cordydectomy, okay? Cutting of the vocal cords, or the animal's vocal cords. As you likely were, it is known as devocalization, involves sitting, slitting a dog's vocal cords in order to prevent them from barking, howling, or crying, as the letter went on. The cruel procedure, which is opposed with rare exceptions by the American Veterinary Service, American Veterinary Medical Association, the American Animal Hospital Association, and others, it seems to have been performed so that the experimenters would not listen to the pained cries of the beagle puppies. This is reprehensible, a misuse of taxpayer funds, the lawmaker said, and this was at a hearing. Just imagine the dogs. They're still puppies, six months, eight months, crying out for help. This is not a Republican and/or Democratic issue. I don't understand why we fund this kind of stuff. Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley. I would just like to say, for the last topic that you talked about, you could not be more correct that it is not a partisan issue, especially when PETA was hosted by Tucker Carlson this week to discuss it. So sometimes strange bedfellows, but I think it's something that we all agree on, that it's a gross misuse of taxpayer funds. Thank you. Commissioner Fasano?
Well, thank you, Director Fantasia. Thanks to all who are joining us this evening. I'll keep my comments brief tonight, but I wanted to start by sharing that last week I had the opportunity to join business leaders and local officials in a meeting of the Morris Sussex Warren Workforce Development Board, who is responsible for policy, planning, and oversight of the workforce development system in those three counties. Their goal is to combine local employment, training, and support services into a system that meets the needs of both job seekers and employers. I thought it was a really productive meeting, and I appreciate all the work that they put in in getting that together. Many local businesses need our support now more than ever. It was clear during that meeting, it's been clear for the last few months, I think it's something all of us in this room know. So I wanted to remind local businesses here in Sussex County that the Board of Commissioners still has its American Rescue Plan Business Survey available on our website, where businesses can share what impact the pandemic has had on their operation and what help is needed most urgently, which will help us tremendously as we navigate through our local recovery planning. And speaking of planning, I know the Director and I had the opportunity to be a part of many internal budget meetings at the county here with our department, division leaders over the last few weeks, which I also found to be really productive as we begin next year's fiscal budget, if you can believe it. I certainly want to thank all of our staff who are a part of those meetings. I really appreciated their presentations, their insight, and their ideas. And if you haven't heard, it's a November to Remember at the Sussex County Library System. Savvy shoppers, yoga lovers, and cooks of all ages will find something to do at the Sussex County Library System this November, and programs listed by location are planned for outdoors, but they may move to Zoom if weather does not cooperate. There's also a variety of virtual options available to participate as well. All Sussex County Library locations are open Monday through Saturday from 9:00 to 5:00 PM, plus two evenings each week, with no appointments necessary. And for more information on a November to Remember, specific branch hours, and more, please go to sussexcountylibrary.org. Finally, I'd like to remind everyone here and everyone listening to go vote, whether it's on Election Day, at your usual voting location, whether it's by mail, or whether it's early voting, which is taking place still for the next few days, that's new for us here in New Jersey, and that's the opportunity for you to go to three county locations to vote your specific ballot. That goes through October 31st. Our locations, our three locations this year are the Sussex County Fairgrounds in Augusta, New Jersey, the Sussex Wantage Library in Wantage, and the Louise Child's Branch Library in Hopcon. The hours for those locations are Monday through Friday, 10:00 to 8:00 PM, and Sunday, 10:00 to 6:00 PM. So again, whether it's on Election Day, at your usual voting, at your usual voting place, by mail, or at early voting at any of those locations, it's your right, it's your voice, and it's so, so important. For more information on how to vote, where to find the business survey I mentioned earlier, latest county news and more, please visit our website, which is simply sussex nj.us. Thank you, Director, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to start my report tonight in just mentioning something along the lines what Anthony said, the budget subcommittee meetings. I've been on the budget subcommittee for a couple years now, and this year felt very different. We had many stories that were told to us about how each department uniquely dealt with the pandemic and some of the challenges, some of the purchases, how some priorities have changed, the need for staffing, the need for just increase in resources, increase in manpower. So I found it to be very different than any subcommittee meeting I had ever sat in before for the budget, and this board definitely has its work cut out for it, you know, to make sure that everybody gets exactly what it is that they need in an equitable manner. I did want to mention a little piece of good news today. If you recall, earlier this year, we invited Hunter Space, who is a volunteer firefighter for the Sussex Wantage, and he discussed how he organized a drive, very basic drive for some older fire equipment, to be shared with a fire department that was in Alabama. That actually took off and it grew. Now, each state, if you recall, has different regulations on how long that equipment is deemed good for. In the state of New Jersey, 10 years is the cap. In other states, there is no such cap, and they were working really using bare, bare bones equipment. Well, this took off to the point where now, today, firefighter one participated in the final delivery to the departments. Walmart became a huge national sponsor of this movement that literally originated on a conversation between a Sussex Borough fireman and a fireman from Alabama, and now tractor trailers have gone down full with fire equipment to Alabama. They have equipped now over 200 volunteer fire departments outside of the area. There are fire departments from Byram and Sussex County. There's another fire department in Sussex County, and I apologize, it's escaping me right now, that also is very integral in that, and a couple fire departments in Pennsylvania. But literally, they are going to, in my opinion, be able to service thousands upon thousands of people now in a safe manner and protect the volunteers. So it's just amazing, you know? They say, you know, once there was a grain of sand that wanted to become a beach, right? But you can't do it on your own, and this is just a prime example of somebody who had this great idea, and all it took was a seed of an idea, and it just exploded, and we'll never know how far-reaching it is, but it's just amazing. So I just want to thank Hunter Space and all our volunteer firefighters for that project. All right, two main focuses tonight. The first is from the Health Department, and the second is our quarterly update from the College. I have a lot of great information about the College from Dr. Connolly, but I'm going to start with the Health Department first. So Atlantic Health Systems and Public Health Nursing have now partnered together to offer the Moderna, J&amp;J, and Pfizer vaccinations. The Office of Public Health Nursing is also holding flu vaccination clinics at various locations throughout the county. If you visit the website, you can see clinic dates and times. Again, the flu is still here. We had this odd thing where for 18 months we thought it disappeared, it's here. So if you are interested in a flu shot, the county is offering that. Now, as far as the COVID-19 vaccinations and boosters at no cost, Byram Volunteer Fire Department, Saturday, October 30th, and at Knoll Heights on Saturday, November 6th. So Moderna and J&amp;J are available at the Office of Public Health Nursing at no cost every Thursday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM and 2:00 to 4:00. Walk-ins are welcome. There's also booster doses, and it matters if you have to qualify for the booster for Pfizer and Moderna with specific medical, medical conditions. J&amp;J allows you to get your second booster as long as it's been two months since you've got your first shot. I cannot stress enough, again, this is information that we're sharing for county availability because we are providing a very valuable health-related service, but it all starts with your doctor or your medical professional. So please consult with your doctor and see if any of these are right for you should you make the choice to take advantage of any of these services that the county consistently provides. So also, just to let you know, the CDC does allow people to mix and match vaccines. That seems to be the new guidance, but again, please speak with your doctor or medical professional regarding what the best, best choice is for you. So the Department of Health reports that Sussex County residents have been administered a total of 93,622 first doses and 83,124 residents are considered fully vaccinated at this time. Now, COVID testing is still available and still free. You'll see some uptick where people say, you know, maybe it's for their jobs, that it's a requirement, maybe it's for volunteer opportunities that they do, but that testing now is more prevalent even in the public schools now. So actually, all schools in New Jersey, not just relegated to public schools, but the county is still offering those free tests at home. Those are done, there's the saliva test through Vault, there is the nasal swab test through LabCorp, and please just visit our county website about that, and it's a very, very quick, simple process. I myself have used the tests for, for work myself, and they really work out well. You get your results back very quickly, and again, 100% free for county residents. So please visit the website for that. Our epidemiologist, Ms. Lama Shaddad, reports that our region continues to be in yellow for that weekly activity report. We're averaging about, I would say, 45 cases a day, seems to be the norm here in the county. So in total, our county has experienced 17,762 cases of COVID, which is about 12 and a half percent of our entire population in Sussex County, reports that they have had COVID. There's been a total of 332 deaths. 134 of those are related to nursing homes and long-term care facilities in the county. Now, hospitalizations in October thus far, we've had 40 in the month of October. We're almost at the end of October. In September, we've had 42, so we seem to be holding in the 40s for total hospitalizations at this point on a monthly basis. Now, by way of outbreaks, where are we at? There are currently 25 outbreaks in the county. There's one in our acute care centers. Now, we have 18 or 19 acute care centers, and in the height of the pandemic, we were seeing outbreaks in 12, 12 at a time every week. So to only have it confined to one facility is, is very, very good. So we also have 17 outbreaks in schools. So please keep that in mind, that that seems to continue to be, you know, a, a spreading location. And again, we all are under the impression that it's a Delta variant. They test Delta variant, and it takes about 16 to 24 days to get those results back. They don't send out everybody's test for Delta. It has to be a breakthrough infection or a repeat infection, but that seems to be just about all of the cases that are typed are coming back as a Delta variant. So again, for all things related to this, please visit the county website. Again, I boast this to some degree, that Atlantic Health has referred to our county website as a one-stop shop for anything that you may need related to that. So please continue to visit the website for all updates and information. Now I'm going to move on to the County College update, which I love getting this from Dr. Connolly, because it's very exciting, when we get to see how much the college is growing and what's progressing here. So first of all, for academics, Mr. Jason Fruj, who is the Dean of Technical Operations, is investigating opportunities to collaborate with the New Jersey Council of Community College for aligning education to build an innovative workforce initiative. So in other words, job placements in performing arts, college production performance classes toward a company called All Access Staging and Productions in Newton. During the tour, the group ran into a second-year welding student from our college who works full-time at All Access and goes to classes at night. Daryl Ferrier, the on-campus supervisor for CDL Training, says there are 13 students currently participating, and they're in the yard, four from Amazon, with more from Amazon expected in the program, too. We also have 160 driving school. They've established a direct connection to the DMV that allows the students to permit tests at the designated DMV locations without having that two-to-three-month wait and delay that has been happening, compliments of New Jersey government. We also have the One Stop Career Counseling Center that will then be able to send students to the Sussex CDL site for training. Now, as far as facilities, as of August 30th, the McGuire Technical Education Center Culinary Project is on schedule, but unfortunately Hurricane Ida delayed the project by several weeks. So a December completion is expected now, should not uproot our plans to kick off the program in January, but it, the hurricane did kind of push it back into December. So Tim O'Connor from the College Media Services Department is completing drone pilot certification, and he's using it to provide more aerial marketing and general pictures. So if you visit the college website, you'll see, you know, sometimes they do promos or videos or whatnot, and you say, oh, my God, where'd that come from? Well, it's this man with his drone, and it's pretty awesome to watch. So I'm glad that that's going to continue. On October 7th, the foundation hosted a virtual scholarship award reception, and $140,000 was awarded to deserving students through 142 scholarships for the Fall 2021 and Spring 2022 semesters. There was a pumpkin float on October 20th, and Lace is holding their annual pumpkin float at the Horton Pond. They're also hosting something awesome tomorrow night. It is one of my absolute favorites, being a former English teacher, but you're never really former, you still kind of are an English teacher. They are hosting a presentation of Edgar Allan Poe's The Tell-Tale Heart tomorrow, produced by North Star Theater Company, which is a nonprofit theater company here in Sussex County. And there's going to be music, a costume contest, prizes. It's free. It's tomorrow from 6:30 to 8:30 PM right here. Carrie the Musical is going to be October 29th through the 31st, and November 5th through the 7th, hosted by Drama Geek Studios. So it's going to be right here, so I'm sticking with the Halloween theme. And also to move away from the horror genre and into something a bit more wholesome, High School Musical Junior will be held on November 12th to the 14th, hosted again by Drama Geek Studios in the Performing Arts Center. So if you like horror, come in October. If you like happy frou-frou, you're going to come here in the spring, and arts will be enjoyed by all here in the county. So that's my report for this evening, and we're going to keep moving forward.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
Yes?
Excuse me, Commissioner. Did you say Carrie the Musical?
Carrie the Musical. I mean, doesn't it just bring up feelings of, you know, ah, we have somebody fist pumping? Yes, hello there.
Hi, I'm Carrie.
Good. So yes, they're going to be hosting Carrie the Musical, which is very, very timely for Halloween, I feel, right? So come to the bash tomorrow, come see Carrie. Fantastic. Love it. Okay. So now we are moving on to number 10, which is the approval of the consent agenda. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda A and B.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these items? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. Number 11, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of October 14th, 2021, and the executive session October 14th, 2021. I need a motion to approve the minutes from both the regular meeting and the executive session.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass.
Abstain.
Okay. Which are you abstaining from?
Uh, October 14th.
You were absent on the 14th.
I was absent, yes.
Okay. So can you please have the record reflect that Commissioner Yardley abstained because he was not present? Thank you. Number 12, appointments and/or resignations. We have A, motion to adopt the appointment of Brian Hatao as a farm representative to the Sussex County Agricultural Development Board for a term of four years, effective immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2025. I need a motion to adopt this appointment.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Abstain.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes. Number 13, resolutions. We need a motion to adopt the resolutions A and B. This involves the servers for software for the prosecutor's office and the Sussex County Human Services Advisory Council bylaws amendment. Motion, please.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes. Number 14, awards of contract change orders and bid, there are none. Number 15, financial, a resolution regarding the payment of the bills list for October 27th, 2021. I need a motion to pay the bills list.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes. Number 16, personnel. Resolution authorizing the personnel agenda of October 27th, 2021. I need a motion to adopt the personnel agenda.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Terry, please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes. Number 17 is our administrative report. I'm going to ask Mr. Greg Poff to please come forward.
The, as was reported by the board, the operating budget hearings have concluded, and I do appreciate the involvement of the budget subcommittee as well as all of the presenters. Our capital budget hearings are being scheduled for early to mid-November. As Commissioner Carney indicated, the project notice regarding the replacement of Signal SC 36 has been distributed. There, in fact, are $250,000 worth of grant funds, which represents 56% of the total project cost being funded by grants. I attended virtually the Fourth Annual Economic Forum presented by Latty Clark &amp; Ryan, Nissavatia, and the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce, and the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership. The keynote speaker was Ryan Servino, Chief Economist at JLL. The program focused on New Jersey's economic development in the post-pandemic world, and the spoiler alert is things are actually looking much better than what people previously believed. So it was very good information, and I will be happy to share the slide deck that was the basis of the presentation. Very good news for us here in Sussex County moving forward. And also, just to touch upon something the director had mentioned, the Division of Health has updated its website specifically on information regarding the most current guidance on the administration of the COVID-19 booster shots. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is number 18, county council report, and every commissioner has received a memo regarding that, but Mr. Steinhardt, does anything to share?
Um, no. I mean, the only add-ins that I would have is we've opted into the opioid settlement. We have a couple of other documents to sign to affect that. Still working with the county on the American Rescue Plan Act, constantly monitoring the county's litigation, some of which we'll review later tonight, but that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Number 19, unfinished business. Any commissioner have an item to discuss under unfinished? Number 20, new business. Does any commissioner have anything to discuss under new business? Okay, number 21, it's the public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. Please state your name and municipality for the record, and I would just like to remind the audience, please direct your comments directly to the board and not to fellow audience members. So at this moment, I need a motion to open the floor for public comment.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the floor is now open for public comment. Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay, floor is closed. Next, we are moving on to reminders. Please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules, and also, again, everything you would ever need to know, all things county-related, you may find on the county website. Now we are moving into number 23, which is executive session, which is a closed session. It's a resolution providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12. Terry, please.
Whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items. Number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege under contract negotiations, PBA 138 Sheriff's Office, PBA 138 Prosecutor's Union, and Lake Grinnell Dam. Other is opioid litigation settlements. Item number eight, matters relating to the employment relationship personnel policies. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed sessions may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved upon the completion of the business for which the Board has entered into executive session, the Board shall, may, not, what?
I don't anticipate, ma'am.
Shall not reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public, and therefore the Board expects to adjourn the meeting from executive session.
I would need a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session.
I make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay, we are in executive session. I want to thank you all for coming out here and joining us tonight. I know it was a smaller crowd, but it's nice to see faces, so we appreciate you. Please get home safe. Thank you.
Thank you.